I'd like to call to order the meeting of the school committee for April 23rd, 2019. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Decanter?
Here.
Mr. Cole is absent.
Soon to be here, I'm sure.
Mr. Vannen?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hawke isn't.
Here.
Mr. Riddick is absent. Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Two absent, one probably late and one absent, one probably late.
We have a call. Thank you. Please stand for the political allegiance.
(inaudible) in the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the liberal, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
There comes Mr. ... Yes. I'm going to add an item that was accidentally left off the agenda, and that is a period of public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody who would like to address the school committee to please come up and do so. I would ask you to sign in with your address so that we can put the address in the minutes. And please keep your comments to about two minutes. It usually is something that we take in and don't respond to here, but we'll try to answer any questions that we can. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share with us? Seeing none? We're going to hold off on the consent agenda until Mr. Cole is here. You're on.
All right. So I've just got a brief summary of what's been happening at the high school. So last night, we had the academic awards night, which is a great opportunity to really convey what the success our students are achieving. We honored Sam Aqua-Viva in particular as the recipient of the Francis Brezhnev hand award, which just demonstrates a real scholar athlete. We also honored many other students who have continued to achieve academic excellence. And just the numbers, we had 125 students earn bronze keys, 77 received silver, and 47 receiving gold keys. And this is a real product of all the great efforts that have been put into for the New buryport schools. So as the school committee members, your work is paying off, so nice job.
I don't think anyone's ever said that to me before.[168.12][168.12](laughter)
We have an improv show this Thursday night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Tickets are $5. I recommend everyone goes. It's a real great opportunity to see the theater program and what their students are capable of doing.
Can you say what that is again?
What?
What is it?
It's an improv show, so...
Improv?
Yeah.
Got it.
And then finally, right before April vacation, Student Council held its third annual meeting. And at this meeting, we, some of the stuff that we got across, we endorsed a proposal from Owen Keough, who is, who's pretty much to hold an autism awareness day. And that day is going to happen on April 30th. And we are asking all staff and students to wear blue in support. He also set up a very nice bulletin board in the hallway near guidance offices and to help raise awareness. The council, we've also...
I'm sorry, you said that's the 30th?
Yes, the 30th.
And is that the student who came and spoke to us? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We have heard recommendations from Mr. Wolf on ideas to push back the final exam schedules, and we kind of talked about that for a little bit. And then we provided feedback. So as of this point, it's not finalized. Mr. Wolf and a lot of the teachers are still, that's a work in progress, but it's going to probably be, the day will probably start around somewhere around 8:00. We've also been in progression of working to coordinate student support around vaping in order to end the problem at the high school. And finally, we are very excited to have Mayor Holliday attend our next meeting on May 2nd.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move to the consent agenda. Mr. Cole, we have warrants.
Yes, we do. We have three warrants.
Do we have a motion?
First warrant, I moved that the following name bills and payrolls to the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $14,974.12 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second warrant, I moved that the following name bills to the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $23,323.06 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And the final warrant, I moved that the following name bills to the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $511,019.65 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a set of minutes from April 1st, 2019, which seems so long ago. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion, changes? You're none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to turn this over to our superintendent for student and staff recognitions.
First of all, I just want to, you know, thank our community. I attended another wonderful event in the early spring, the Hello Spring Event at the Brezhnev hand. You know, and I had, not only on this event did I get to attend, but I also get to judge cupcakes, which is one of my strengths. With Mayor Holliday, she was also a judge.
I had chocolate, though.
But it's...
You were, yeah. I had chocolate, though.
Yeah. That's the category I want next year.
All right.
I think I was on, oh, is this utilizing Girl Skull Cookies innovation, so...
Do we get to, where do we sign up for judges today?
We have, Jessica Olson's on the audience and...
We've got volunteers already next year.
Put me down for two.[456.53][456.53](laughter)
But it was a great community event for a lot of reasons. One, welcoming in spring, right after the winter, and our students and families at the Brezhnev had an opportunity to play games and events, which was wonderful. But also another aspect of that day was our high school students volunteering. And many of them were there to set up, they stayed the entire day, they ran the activities. Our students participated in face painting for the younger students. And then also many of those high school volunteers stayed afterwards to clean up. And I think it's those events that bring this great community together, similar to the Plankathon, Hello Spring, and so many others that I've experienced throughout the share, that I really want to take an opportunity and recognize not only the staff and the students that really organize that and who are the unsung heroes behind the scenes, but really just bring recognition to another great event in this community. Many of our students that we're going to recognize also participate in athletics and other events, so I do see some of our students that are here tonight, but some of them aren't here because they couldn't attend for other events, and we'll make sure we'll get them their certificates. But at this time, I also would like to bring up Jessica Olson, the president of Friends of Newburyport Youth Services, to just kind of say a few words about the event and how successful it was. And we recruited three more cupcake judges up here, so...
That microphone is not, doesn't go, it doesn't go around, it's for the television.
I was just going to stand someplace central to both sides of this, okay? So yes, I'm Jessica Olson, and the Friends of Newburyport Youth Services president. We are an organization that exists to fundraise and advocate for youth services. So the Hello Spring event was one way to bring the community together. As Superintendent Gallagher said, it's a fun day. We love having student participation, we can't do the event without it. We also, I mean, the families that come, the cupcake judges are amazing. But what we also tried to do was bring together not just the Newburyport community, but the surrounding communities, because Newburyport Youth Services supports six of the communities around here. So we have, you know, Ames, not only Newburyport, Newbury, Salisbury, Raleigh, Georgetown, Amesbury, I think I got them right? And so we really reached out to bring everyone in. And so, you know, we had the mayor and Superintendent Gallagher, but we had teachers from all of our schools, we had students who, you know, were volunteering, but we had folks from Triton, and we had, you know, people from other schools. So it's really an amazing day. And, and, you know, I think Youth Services is about community as much as it is about the young people in the community, and so bringing everyone together, support it. So that, it was, it was truly amazing day, and we had great turnout. And two years in a row, we've had weather that's been bad, but not bad enough to shut us down, which gets people in, which is the whole purpose of having an active indoor event while the weather's still bad. So thank you, you know, for supporting it. Thank you all who were there to help us, and we're looking forward to next year and more cupcake judges.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Gee, Steve, you didn't get the opportunity to volunteer to be a cupcake judge. I'm sure there'll be opportunity later.
They probably will.
Other than Jessica Olson for organizing that, we also have two students and, I mean, two teachers that we'd like to recognize, and then also we'll call up the students after that. So our two teachers, Mary Rakowski, who also volunteers, she's one of our art teachers who helped out to get the art students. You can come on up, congratulations, if you want, yep.
Just don't trip over the wires.
Yes. Actually, we're going to come right around, yep? And then the other staff member we'd like, Cheryl Zaino, to come on up. Is Cheryl here?
No, she's not there.
Thanks.
Awesome. So I'm not sure if you'd like to help us recognize our students that are here and that is free.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Carol, I didn't see Caroline Cullen. I think Catherine Mead is here.
All right.
She's my rock.
Okay.
That will be graduating and the president of the Art Honor Society. I don't actually think I see Logan.
Yep. I'll read the names right after. Okay.
Cole Olson is here.
Katie Olson-John. Cole.
And I think that might be it, actually, so far right now. Unless I'm missing someone, I don't see other students here.
All right, congratulations, Cole. You guys are on to the call.[776.82][776.82](applause) We also just stay right there, just so the names, we had Caroline Cullen, Ciara O'Malley, Riva Saba, Samantha Lucy, Logan Latimer, Ciara Leahy, Shay Holly, and Maxwell Foltz will also volunteer, so thank you all very much. We're going to take a photo walk and give them a round of applause.[805.82][805.82](applause) This is Ms. Chokol's certificate.
Congratulations.
The teacher's certificate. Okay.
Come together a little bit. Perfect. One say cheese. One more. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, let's go ahead.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a NEXAMP, there's a lot of accuracy here, a NEXAMP proposal for AOC through the SMART program. I, do we have somebody who's here to present? Great, terrific.
All right.
You guys are up, yep?
Hi, Molly. You guys are here? Oh, I see. I'm Molly Edmerone, recycling and energy manager for the city of Newburyport. And today we are going to be talking to you about a community solar program. And we are looking for the school committee's agreement to accept solar credits. Those will go on your school bills, and it will be a savings to the school. So we're just going to talk a little bit about that, this program, and what we've done to get us to this point. But first, let me introduce Mike Strauss is our, the chairman of our energy advisory committee. Don Walters is also on our advisory committee, as well as the planning board, and I'm sure you all know Steve Urholme. So we were on a selection committee, we sent out an RSP recently for this program, and we'll get into the... Before I do, before I dive into that, I want to say thank you to the schools for, is it last week? No, the week before, the Green Expo. It was a huge success. Thank you all so, so much. I know it was a lot of work. Sean, you were great. Angela, thank you. Lisa and Steve, really, it was a great job, of course, Mayor Holliday.
And you.
Well, yeah, of course.[1001.23][1001.23](applause) A lot of students, a lot of participants, over 600 people attended, so we were really excited about it. So thank you all very much for that. So this program, so the Department of Energy Resources with participating utilities launched this new program called SMART, Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target. And its basic mission is to encourage the further development of solar in this state of Massachusetts. It was just approved in September, and then it was, it started to roll out in November. It's a declining block program, which doesn't really need too much, you all bet, and there's only eight blocks in this program, and we're already in the eighth block. So it's getting snapped up very quickly. So we just, or put this forward to the city council a few weeks ago, and we do need to get an answer from both you all and the city council for moving forward and signing the contracts. We, the city will be signing the contract with NEXAMP, not the school committee. We're simply, again, asking you all for your permission to allow these credits to be used towards the school's electricity accounts. And dive in, if you'd like. So the SMART program provides certainty through a new bill crediting system, so it's basically a credit system, and it's called Alternative On-Bill Credit. And it's the new net metering program. So if you all are familiar with net metering, that was sort of the whole way the state was doing it, and you could be an off-taker for solar farms' electricity that was produced. And you had to be in the same load zone. We are an off-taker of the Salisbury Solar Farm on Rabbit Road, and we had to be in that district to accept that. For that program, we get a fixed 10% discount on our electricity. So whatever the national grid rate's doing, we're always going to be getting a 10% discount, and it's a 20-year agreement. So this is another program like net metering, except this has a big difference. The solar does not have to be in our load zone, it can be anywhere in the state of Massachusetts. So this is a great thing, so now solar being built in the western part of the state where it normally wouldn't be. And they're trying to do that to open it up across the state and operate to different types of buyers. It's just like the net metering program, the credit will go on the bill, and the bill just has to be, you know, it's, there's going to be, it's going to be seamless to the accounting office, they will just simply have a credit on their bill. This is just a quick summary of what has happened with the Rabbit Road facility. So we signed that agreement in 2013. Our net benefit so far is $343,000. So it's anywhere between $36,000 and $44,000 per year. For this alternative on-bill credit program for the schools, we're estimating between $40,000 and $44,000 per year of credit. So that's the second of the schools we've been. Bottom line, the city gets to directly participate in and benefit from one of these blocks in this new SMART program. There really is no risk to the city. This doesn't work, if the solar plants don't produce, we don't pay anything. We only pay if it works. As I said, there's not much effort, it's hard as the school goes, if the credits are right on the bill. And I think in our, the next slide, if you go there, it will show what that looks like. But over the 20-year period, it's almost a million dollar savings to the schools. So we can get into more detail on how this works, if you all would like to, with the NEXAMP power plant. Would you like to see that? That's more technical and information from NEXAMP. Or if you have any questions?
So how does this relate? Because I see it's a 20-year agreement. How does this relate to, I think, the agreement that was signed with Amoresco back in '09? Is there any dovetailing here?
Totally separate.
Totally separate?
Yep.
So where does that agreement stand in relation to this? Because I see this talks about, this talks about seller finances develops, owns, operates, and maintains solar electric generation facilities. So what, what is different than, what's different, I guess, in this deal, if you will, as compared to that one with the Amoresco and the power purchase agreement?
We're about 10 years into that agreement now with Amoresco. That's a power purchase agreement. So we're just buying the electricity directly from Amoresco and using it in the middle school.
Okay.
This new, this new program, we're basically just buying credits. The credits are going to show up on the bill, on our bill, and then we pay for those credits at a 15% discount. So in other words, if in a particular month, we get a $10,000 credit on one of our electricity bills, we'll pay $8,500 for that credit to NEXAMP.
So the Amoresco project is basically leasing those space. They own that, we pay a fixed amount every year.
Right, and it racks itself, yeah, I'm familiar with that. So I was just trying, okay, so when you say, I guess, how is, how is a credit a credit if you're paying for it?
You get it?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So they produce power at a solar farm someplace in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
There's a meter on that solar farm.
Yeah.
And it says, you've just produced so much power. That gets turned into dollars by a formula that the utilities have agreed to. And that dollars, those dollars can be assigned someplace. We, if we agreed to a 20-year contract, that means for 20 years, they can assign dollars to us. And because they can do that for 20 years, and we're a nice stable municipality, they can get financing to build that solar farm.
Okay.
That's what this agreement allows them to do.
Okay.
And for that opportunity for them, they give us a discount.
Okay.
15%. So that's really how to close the loop on this whole work.
And they like municipalities, as Mike was saying, because they're nice, stable. We're not going anywhere, we're not a business that might go out of business in 20 years.
Right, right.
We're a stable client.
And this is also a different, you know, from the power purchase agreement. The power purchase agreement is, they said, well, here's a good price now, and we put an escala on it.
Right.
And that means we are at risk for the price.
Sure.
This deal says, all we know is we are always getting a discount from national grid prices. So that means that our risk is mitigated a lot.
Right, okay. No, I appreciate you explaining that, because there is a lot of reading here to do. And again, I do have, I'm quite familiar with what was happening back in '08, '09 with Amoresco, and I believe NEXAMP did come into the scene then as well. And they also, didn't they do a big array up on the old Western Electric Building, too? NEXAMP?
I'm not sure about that one, but they've done over 100 megawatts in the state of Massachusetts, both their rooftops, as well as...
So, I mean, just from the process back in '08, '09, I, I would, you know, from what I learned back then, I would definitely give NEXAMP the nod. So I think, sounds good so far.
Yeah, and we did send out an RFP.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, and we had 13, when was it, 11?
15, 15 or something? In the teens.
I can't remember exactly. People that were interested, we only got three proposals back. We actually chose another vendor, was our initial vendor, and by the time, you know, within weeks, we got back to them, they had already found another anchor customer. So this is moving very quickly, this new program.
Great, what's the, what's the interest of the school committee? Do we want to get a further presentation of this, or do we have enough information to take a vote?
I'm ready to vote. I mean, the information's always interesting, if you want to email it to us, that'd be great.
Sure, you can do that.
So there's nothing, there's nothing in this plan or this agreement that changes any of the school facilities or property? Okay.
This is kind of just a summary, if you want to look at that, what it will be over the lifetime, and where the projects are going to be located.
Question, I know that the Rabbit Road facility has, they've signed and sold.
Yes.
So I think we've had two or three subsequent owners at that point, which has had an impact on credits at that point.
Just that the bill comes from...
Different place.
Different name.
So they have the opportunity that they also can sell and assign, but that, we are protected in terms of being locked in to, for the future in terms of that agreement, but that doesn't change once it's assigned or potentially assigned.
Correct. And Don, is NEXAMP one of, some of them are, you know, always looking to build and sell, but I don't know what NEXAMP is.
Correct. The three respondents, only NEXAMP is what they call a strategic owner, meaning they want to own it long-term. So that provides another degree of insurance. Having, having said that, as the mayor just correctly stated, there is the potential for it to always be sold, however, the contract remains in force whomever owns it.
We give a vote of support for this project. Second with more board support.
Any discussion?
I think the question is that the school committee approves the acceptance...
Of credits on our...
Of the alternative on-bill credits.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The school committee approves the acceptance of...
Very cool.
Don, can you restate the, we haven't voted yet, I'm aware of that.
Can we give that language again to...
So the school committee is voting to accept the alternative on-bill credits. On bill?
Okay.
Credits.
Through this solar contract with...
NEXAMP.
NEXAMP, I think we should be a little more specific.
Through the community solar credit contract with NEXAMP.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Thank you.
Anytime you want to come with more money for a project, just call.
The next item on the agenda is the FY '20 school budget. We have had several presentations. Everybody did receive a packet. I think that if there are extras that anybody needs them. There have been no substantive, no significant changes, certainly to the bottom line, that we last discussed. I'll turn it over to Sean.
Sure. And I believe we've made the, this process as inclusive as possible, and we kept, I believe, the school committee updated throughout when we started the, putting our numbers together in January. Leadership team, along with central office, really collaborated, and we developed a priority list, and they're very comfortable with what we're proposing, or what we've proposed. I just also want to thank Nancy Lysek out there, once again, for all of her work. I just also want to thank Nancy Lysek out there, once again, for all of her work in the budget preparation, and her expertise has been instrumental for me and my transition into this great community. As Bruce said, the numbers haven't changed since public hearing. The only thing we added to this is the narratives that you see from the principals. We included the consultants' names for school committee, but when we publish the public budget, we'll take those names out of, for the public documents.
Is there a reason for that?
Well, we, although we're working with different consultants, we, you know, if it's a public, it's almost, it could be like marketing for them. So, for the
See, it's one of those appearance of
Correct. So we're working with, with consultants throughout the district, but, you know, for our public display, we'll pull those out.
Can be an issue.
And I think that's, that's all
Sean, I'm sorry, I just wanted, this is not, I've not posted this, just because I didn't get around to it, but remember, this is a public document, because it got sent in an email. So we just have to be careful about putting stuff in there that we don't want everybody to see. It's gone from the, from the retreat, and the lawyer said, as soon as you hit send
Yeah.
that's now public, because I would have put this and said, "Here's the budget, if you want to come to the meeting."
With the narratives, right.
Right, so
Yeah.
I don't know how you get around that.
Do you, um, can you spit one out without the names tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that just supersedes this, basically, right?
We just, I mean, is it, is it?
I know, I know what you're saying. It's just kind of an oddball type of element to it, so.
Exactly, exactly. So we would feel more comfortable
Sure.
we had those names out. But other than that, I think, you know, we're, we're ready to present and to have, you know, we have nothing further to present, which is a good thing.
Can we ask questions, or are you gonna do another presentation?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll, we'll put the motion on the table and then ask questions.
Okay.
Does anybody want to make a motion to accept this budget as?
Is it a motion to vote on it?
Salute.
I just have one other thing, one other correction that we'll make with the, two of the narratives are, are wrong. The one that is reading the Mullen is actually the NOC, and the one that's reading the NOC is actually the Mullen. So we'll fix that also when we send you the other copy tomorrow.
Need a second on the motion?
Second.
Conversation, dialogue, discussion.
Oh, okay. Middle school, there it was.
I just have two questions about technology stuff. And one is the Mullen, which maybe what you were just saying is actually the NOC.
It's actually the NOC.
If we're talking about the same thing. No, no, because this is the, this is different. This is the grade four, grade five, like, listing. The software went from, um, I don't have a page number of it, actually.
Are you looking at the technology line, Brian?
Yeah, up page twenty-two. Software went from fiscal eighteen, from fifteen-hundred to now eighty-seven. Four-hundred-and-eighty percent increase in software for fourth and fifth grades, is that right? Or is there a typo?
No, I
I mean, software for eighty-seven-hundred just sounds like a huge number anyway. I don't know if they've, there's a whole bunch of new cloud services from two years ago, or how's that?
I'm not positive that I can speak to it. And my guess, I can tell you what I'm assuming, is that these are probably subscriptions to the variety of software programs that, that we subscribe to. And if you look at the FY-19 revised, that was at seven thousand.
Right, so I mean, even that jump is quite a lot.
Yeah, that was a big jump.
If it's because right around, then, I mean, I have personally gone from, you know, disk-based things to subscription stuff, so
Right.
I'm presuming that's, but fourth and fifth grade, there's not a whole lot of kids there compared to the high school, and their numbers are way lower. And that same thing, so it's this thing about doing the vote right now, if I don't, if it's wrong, like, just the clerical, I feel that's one thing, but if it's something like, wait, why are we, why are fourth and fifth graders spending eight times as much as nine to twelfth graders on software? I just don't know what the, what, what is the software they're using? Is it, is it administrative software or student use?
I would venture to say that a lot of that is because you have more content-focused software at the lower levels. By the time you get into the high school, it's more
But someone knows the answer to this.
Yeah.
I just don't have the specifics in front of me.
It does look like the, the NOC went from thirty-six-hundred FY-18 actual to six-thousand FY-19 revised to seventy-two-hundred FY-20 proposed. So we doubled at the NOC and more than doubled at the Mullen. That is a lot of software for something.
But, yeah, I mean, because that could be educational software, right? Not just, not an OS for a device.
Right, it's, you know, anything with our textbooks, we've got a lot of subscriptions now that support the work that we do. I don't know if Lisa has
Oh, yeah. You're here, do you, do you know?
Yeah.
Could you?
I can't speak for the Mullen, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So for the middle school, it is to support the one-to-one devices, we have increased the number of subscriptions we have. And some of that is like baseline subscriptions. For example, we have a software called Hapara, which allows us to monitor student devices, so it's sort of a safety maintenance thing, as well as subscriptions to databases and other services like News ELA, places where we can get a variety of different curriculum. So Rocket Lit is another example of something that we've been using. And then also built into this is a software called Edge Elastic, which we are piloting right now in hopes that it will support some of our standards-based work that we're doing with Billy Donegan. So it's a software that's gonna support that.
What is it called?
Edge Elastic.
Edge Elastic. And Hapara is a, like, per person, like, it's a
Yeah, it's a per person. Yeah.
All right. I just have one more question, if I can, since I'm already talking. Athletics, insurance went from two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to nine-thousand in two years?
Which budget?
Um, the athletics, page thirty-five. It was two-fifty, then two-fifty, then nine-thousand from eighteen to nineteen.
It was taken from a different account prior. It was taken from insurance at a system-wide. This year, it's budgeted fully in athletics.
So the number was, the nine-thousand's always being spent, or around there?
It's always been spent, yes.
Yeah, because two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for insurance seems pretty low.
A little low.
Right, okay.
Not insured much for that.
Additional discussion or questions? We'll take the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Ayes. Abstaining. Budget passes. Congratulations on your first budget.
Thank you.
Now, now make it work. The next item on the agenda was something that was added late to the agenda. It has to do with the Puerto Rico Hurricane Relief Grant. I don't know if Assistant Superintendent Beck wants to talk to us a little bit about it.
Sure. We received a grant when we had a, a couple of students here who were relocated from the hurricane in Puerto Rico. And this was relief money that was sent to help support the education of those students. The grant still exists, and so we want to make you aware of the grant, and, and we want to, this is not about, this is a first read. You eventually will vote on the, on if we can use that money to support our ESL programming at this point, the remainder of the grant. And you have the document telling you what is in the remainder of that grant.
Questions? Yeah, can you, just sort of typically, what kind of service have you provided?
Well, we've been, you know, we were looking at the amount, I think it's about four-thousand dollars, that's there for the grant. So we're looking at translation services for some of our ESL students. We've built some additional programming for our students, like our camp that we did over the vacation. We're looking for, we're doing cross-district enhancement with the families of our ESL students, and so we're developing programs for them. So it would just be used to support any of the additional programs that actually would enhance the ESL programming that we do.
So there's no one-to-one relationship between the students and the services they got in this figure?
No, I, well, I mean, I think at the time, there was a formula at the time, but those students have all moved back to Puerto Rico at this time. But the state still provides you, you know, with the remainder of the grant.
Is this something we need to have a second reading on? If the money's there, and
Right. I think it was just that it didn't get on the agenda early enough, and so we didn't know that it would be appropriate to take a vote tonight, because it wasn't on the agenda soon enough.
Is this something finance, isn't that usually something finance committee does? I just, I just don't remember, I just don't remember in the, in the past, having money come here to transfer from one thing to another.
Okay, so, so what do we do then?
I don't mind.
Do we push it to finance and then?
Yeah, I don't think we need to. I think you can, I, I think the issue is, this just came up, it's, it's too soon, given the forty-eight hour, so we have to wait for that to pass. So, want to be the safe side, you wait for the forty-eight to pass and maybe do a vote at the next meeting. Okay.
All right.
Anybody have any additional questions? Just whipping along here.
Seems like a good news story.
I don't see a dollar out here.
It's because Sean's about to get cranked. He's got, he's got, he's got two packets and a couple PowerPoints and
I deeply regret that I turned the rest of the meeting over to Sean, who's gonna go over his entry plan presentation.
It all started back when I was born.
Sean Gallagher, be coming.
Awesome. All right, well, first of all, thank you very much, and, you know, for, for that last grant, that was Nancy Lysek's recommendation, just to make sure. She's very thorough, like, for those grants to be approved in the sixth meeting, that will work. First of all, I presented the entry plan, kind of the format, what we were planning on doing throughout. I have a lot of my, we won't go through every document, but these, from a lot of the interviews, personal interviews, you know, so we did a lot of research and worked with a lot of people. And before I want to continue, I just want to thank everybody, the hundreds of people that I met with, that gave me their opinions, their feedback, their insight. I think it really assisted me on formulating how we're gonna move forward as a district. So I just want to thank everybody for all the help there. So, in the fall, I presented the, the idea of our, what we want to do for our, or my entry plan, kind of the goals, the documents. And it had three phases: listening, learning, observing, analyzing, and sharing feedback findings, and then development of preliminary goals, utilizing our district strategic plan as really the catalyst on how we move forward. So as we looked at the review process, the amount of information that I collected over the past several months can really seem to be overwhelming, but I think, and thinking as a whole, I feel captured, the common patterns, trends, themes, to begin to enhance our strengths, and at the same time, address the areas of growth. Detailed process, I really took, I think, a personal approach to analyzing and gathering survey data, which I really believe was helpful. As much as I could meet with people one-on-one or go out and see classrooms and teachers, you know, when I support staff, I think was really instrumental in developing my entry plan. And also throughout this process, it really helped me with my transition into the school community. Phase one, I was listening, learning, observing, and as you all have, you have a detailed plan, results, and findings, and then this is really the PowerPoint summarizing a lot of that information you already have. So as we look at the individual meetings, focus groups, conversations throughout with the community, parents, guardians, and students, ongoing to this day, obviously being in the classroom and school visits, I believe is essential, not only to support our teachers and support staff, but also at the ground level, you can really see what's going on and really start to develop the, the needs of the district. A lot of document analysis, and I broke that into two, with the academics and the operational and financial. So the general questions, when I first came in, after I was hired about a year ago today, was I started to meet with school committee, meet with the mayor. Susan Bakara was very important. I had meetings with her in May and June, even before I arrived. So these were some of the key aspects of what I was asking in the beginning. But as soon as I started to get very familiar with our school community, I kind of shifted the questions from the beginning, before I was in Newbury Fort. And then once I was in Newbury Fort, I started, I shifted the questions for, like, these different areas. And people just being, what are the three strengths of Newbury Fort from your perspective? What areas of growth do we focus on? Where do the hopes be at district? And then we started to shift to that twenty-first century college and career readiness, asking all of those stakeholders, you know, what are the skills necessary that you feel when a Newbury Fort senior graduates and walks across age, they're going to need to be successful in college, career, or military, or whatever, to be successful in their communities? And then the other aspect I asked, in your opinion, you know, what area should we absolutely maintain at all costs? And then I thought this was really important, if they had any other comments they would like to share. So really, an open dialogue for them from the one-on-one meetings, and then through the surveys, we also ask these questions. And then what was really great is, would you be willing to volunteer on a future committee? And then kindly submit, this was on our survey, we had a lot of parents and a lot of staff, well over fifty parents and well over fifty staff members that would be willing to serve, volunteer, and that's, you know, around December, within a short time being in the Newbury Fort public school. So we already have a nucleus, I think, as we start to build for the future, to bring a lot of stakeholders back to the table and have those conversations. Conversations with the following individuals and groups were included, but not limited to, I think, I'm not going to reach out these bullets, but a lot of different people within our school community, the community at large, the cafeteria workers, the clerical staff. Every time I'm in the schools, I'm talking to a lot of different people. Even working through the Rotary, I've had, you know, informal and formal conversations there, and when I was volunteering, ringing the, the bell, you know, and people coming in the market basket and Salvation Army are ringing the bell, "Hey, you're the superintendent," and they gave me their opinion, and I asked some of those questions, you know, if they were willing to talk. So it's been great, a lot of, a lot of great feedback. Other community members that were not necessarily tied to the school, but within this great community, are all up there, and people I've met with, and conversations, and a lot of these really developed some great partnerships with a lot of people from talking to them. So phase two is really taking all that survey data, in addition, providing, so the people I could not meet with individually or talk to individually, we sent out surveys to staff and students, utilizing those same questions. And I thought this was another way of gathering feedback and allowing people to give me some of their input. So along with the surveys that we sent out, I also worked with student groups at the high school and the middle school to gain their insight and feedback on some of those essential questions. General questions and themes, so these were the same questions I showed you earlier, but I utilized these questions also with the students to gain their feedback. The document analysis, so after the, the feedback, we really looked at a lot of these different documents, and I know the principals presented a lot of the data presentations to you, the school improvement plan, policy manuals. I've got to work with Nick in the subcommittee on policy, and I'll tell you, that's I've got to work with Nick and the Subcommittee on Policy, and I'll tell you, that's, the work that they've done before I got here is just amazing. So a lot of these type of documents is not only just part of my workday, but also some of the things that we took a harder look at. When you're looking at the, you know, it's, Assistant Superintendent Nick did a great job with the district review, that was, we also inherited. But that also had us to go through a lot of those documents and submit them to the state. So we're looking forward to their report, which will be coming out late spring or early summer. So within, I would say, the next month or so, we'll have an update for that district review. Document analysis in operation and finance, so, once again, working on the budget with Nancy Lysec that began in September. Was also another great way of gaining insight and input on how, you know, with the funding and scheduling and class sizes. And all of those important data points as you're formulating a budget. The collective bargaining agreements, you know, we're negotiating three contracts, so I'm very familiar with those now. And so I think these are a lot of the different documents that, that I also used in developing our findings. And this is why I say, I think the school budget process was essential also as part of this. So you have your, like, your perspective data from all the stakeholders, and then you have your finances, which is really, really helpful. And our Subcommittee, Mr. Cole, has been great, you know, giving the historical insight. And then the collaboration with Mayor Holliday and the city, extremely beneficial in this process. And then if you look, you know, as part of the budget process, city appropriations for the last ten years has been a, obviously a priority for the city and Mayor Holliday. Phase three, as we collect all this data, we did all the analysis of both the academic, financial and operations. Is really to start to develop strategies and goals and really take a look at what we're doing to accomplish. The, so when you, what was really great about this was the district strategic plan. So coming into the district, there's a detailed strategic plan that really starts to address a lot of the themes that came out of my entry plan findings. And that's, and for our strategy, so for the different strategies that we have out of the strategic plan, you know, here are the, the big essential themes. From our current strategic plan, reimagining teaching and learning, offer a array of opportunities for self-discovery, personal achievement. Maximizing internal and external resources, optimize our organization design and operations. Create a dynamic community among all stakeholders, and create a culture that cultivates the best for everyone and supports all students that are ready to learn. So when you see those big headings, what was really beneficial in what we're gonna utilize as we move forward. Is there's very specific action steps built into that. So it's not necessarily just a big vision, but there's also some detailed action steps that are gonna be very beneficial. As we start to formulate our plan. So one of the big themes coming out of all of this information, you know, for us, it's evident that our school culture and supportive school environment is very, very important. To the Newburyport public schools. And this is when we're looking at healthy school culture with the school environment, paramount academic success. And, and that's also ties into my philosophy, you need to have a great school culture, students feeling safe, parents feeling comfortable with the schools. And once you have that, that's really the, the basics where then you can add aspects to the day where we start to do very, very well academically, socially and emotionally. So if you see right underneath this, tied to tho, that general theme, I kinda outlined some of the different specific strategies and action plans. That kinda addressed those different areas out of that theme. And then you also have that, I'm not gonna read all of those to you, but you can see how well the strategic plan and the action steps. Really tied to some of these themes as we move forward. The second theme that came out, very strong, was quality teachers, staff and professional development as a big strength. And we had our professional development day yesterday, and I did articulate that to the faculty, to the parent surveys. The number one theme is quality teachers, and all the stakeholders in this community very impressed with the education and the staff on a daily basis. So, that's really important. So, you know, just summarizing that, a dedicated faculty staff is important, healthy, successful school environment. Investing our staff to ensure they have the proper training and mindset to educate students is essential. Our teachers and staff should have the professional development that is meant to enhance learning that occurs day to day. And so that's kind of a lot of the professional development, a lot of the things that we're doing with the competency-based skills and bringing Billy Bonnigan. As you can see, directly ties into the district strategic strategies and also the different action plans that I highlighted there. The other area is a rigorous curriculum, investment in the curriculum, require our students, money well spent. Deep a look at programming, including humanities. So this was one theme that came out throughout, I think at all the different levels, was humanities, really enhancing our arts, our foreign language, our music programs. When we look at that, you know, overall areas that people do not wanna see cut or maintained at all costs, it was in those humanities areas. So I think that that's great, because that really just ties along with our STEM, our technology, and really we're to focus on the global citizenship. Essential to this theme. And then once again, went back, looked at the theme that was coming out of my entry plan findings, tied it right back to our strategic plan and action steps. Yes.
So, do you think, when you say humanities, I know you put arts and world languages up there, but do you think people were also talking about ELA and social studies?
Yes.
So it's more the core?
Yeah, so one of the, the, the strengths of my entry plan with those essential and open-ended questions, people gave me a lot of feedback. So, there was different ideas in different areas that people were looking at, but yes, it's really taking it all together. And if you look at the strategic plan, the cross-curricular is articulated in our strategic plan and action plan. So that's the, the whole idea is to really bring all those different content areas together. And then once we start to do that, that's where your project-based learning, twenty-first century learning all ties in, because everybody's moving in the same direction.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it was, but as you can see, when we start to go back and looking at our action steps, it really all ties into there, bringing everybody together. Theme four was special education, so there was areas of growth, and then also, there's also a lot of feedback on some of our programming that is extremely beneficial too. So when you take all of that information, so we look at our special education is able to provide our students with continuously voice. So this, I heard, both, as I said, strengths for some families and also areas of growth. So we're gonna take a closer look at our program and instructional support, training, budgets, obviously, we talked about budget and the special education costs. But also really taking a harder look on in-district to really address both, one, to enhance the areas that we're doing very well. A lot of feedback came for some of our in-district programming and faculty in the special education department. And then also, just different areas of growth, we're offering maybe more in-district programming and development programs along. You know, with really looking at our processes and things like that. So when we're looking at special education, going right back to the district improvement plan, the action steps. I kinda highlighted different areas from the themes that were, was coming out of, coming out of that. Theme number five, SEL soft skills, and, and this is also a, a great strength of PBIS, the soft skills. If you recall, one of the questions for parents were, what, what are the skills that you feel your, you know, child will need when they graduate? It was all of those soft skills, it was the ability to overcome adversity, it was grit, it was resiliency, it was confidence, it was communication, it was collaboration. So what's really exciting for me is that's all twenty-first century learning skills, that's all those soft skills. And being in the classrooms from pre-K all the way up to grade twelve, you're seeing that. You're seeing, taking every social interaction in our schools and utilizing that as a learning opportunity. So that's why, I, I know, a few school committee member meetings ago, I kinda joked and said, you know, that snack is not just go have snack and run around. They're utilizing snack at the preschool and kindergarten as an opportunity for students to sit, to share and to have conversations. And I think it's been a great emphasis here in the SEL programming is really strong. The other piece, when you look at this, is also our collaboration with the Newburyport Youth Services. And the first packet I gave, Andy Agmont and the Newburyport Youth Services have been with me since I've come into the district. And it was almost like they were part of the school system, and, and I didn't see them as an outside agency. So I'm like, wait a second, we really need to illustrate the valuable asset Andy Agmont and the Newburyport Youth Services are. I mean, we're working with our students in school, providing support, emotional, social learning supports. But then Andy Agmont's also working with us in, not only in the schools, but outside the schools. So what's really great about Newburyport Public Schools is our students get support within the schools, and then also getting support outside the schools. So that continuum in that collaboration is essential for both our students and families. And is really proud of that, because I think that in some districts, you don't see that great collaboration. And I, you know, highlighted some of the, the aspects of that, I brought it back to our strategic plan. And you can see that, once again, these different areas and these different themes are articulated in our strategic plan and action steps. The other theme that was strong through all of the stakeholders in this community was community support, parent guardian involvement. You know, it's obvious in my transition, the support of the parents and guardians is really the fabric in the community of the work we do together. The continuous support of the Ed Foundation, SUEZI Fund, all the different parent organization, local banks, businesses, community members, as well as many volunteers. Who totally work to support the Newburyport Public Schools. Without these supports, both financially and physically, the work we do, you know, we, we couldn't move the district forward, and it's just amazing. You know, in talking about, Molly said about the Green Expo, that Green Expo was really bringing the entire Newburyport community together. And then outside Newburyport, it was a, a display of everyone rallying together. So we all benefited, the community, the students, the school, and that's just one example. And then once again, what I've done, went back and tied all of these themes back to our action plan and action steps. So, it wasn't on this year, I think we've all done a great job in a sense of, as I transitioned into the Newburyport Public Schools. I received great support by the school committee, central office, and the faculty and support staff. So it was not a year of, well, let's just sit around and let's figure things out till next year. I think we started to address a lot of our goals right away. I'm not gonna read through all of these, I think through your Friday memo that you've received every week. You're very familiar with, I think, a lot of, a lot of the work that we've done and that we're doing. But I'm really just proud of this, because I think for some of these goals, we, we've already started to address from a lot of the input from the different stakeholders.
Sean, I'm sorry, what does CSSR stand for?
CSSR is the Center for Secondary School Redesign.
Great, thank you.
That was Joe, remember Joe DiMonte no, and they did the forums with the students.
Thank you.
Preliminary goals and focus planning for next year, so these are some of the bigger goals that we're gonna start to take a look at. Really, the district budget development, maximizing operations, resources, reallocations, restructuring is gonna be part of that. Developing a twenty-first century classroom, I mean, I don't wanna read you all of these different bullet points, because you have them in front of you. But really taking a look at that college and career readiness, real-world, authentic learning and enhancement of the internships. All of those pieces fit in to the strategic plan, and then kinda how we're gonna get there. So, these are some of the bigger goals, and I have preliminary goals, because this is not just for, for me to do. This is, coming back to our leadership team and extended leadership team, and really sifting through some of these goals. And, and really start getting a plan of action, but once again, tied to, tied back to the strategic plan. So the summary and the next steps, so there's, throughout my experience in different leadership positions and working in different organizations. There's kinda two areas that I think, before we, we, we jump into, and you gotta make sure as you're planning and working with people. The failures of organizations, two areas, one, if you over-goal and over-plan, and then two, if there's no role clarity. So I think as, for me, as a superintendent, as we're looking at moving into next year, making sure that as we plan, we don't over-goal, over-prioritize. You know, our faculty, support staff and leaders, but at the same time, I really believe development of cohesive role clarity and chain of command within all of the organization. Is really gonna be essential for us to accomplish what, what we need to accomplish and, and what we wanna accomplish here. So as, if you just look at some of these other bullets, so that strategic plan and the action steps, we're gonna refer back to that. Design new initiatives or new, I don't wanna use the word initiative, I know faculty, support staff, they hear that and they, they start running. It's really to enhance what we're already doing. Outlined previously, it's evident that priorities in our entire community have direct roots back to the strategic plan. And some of this work's already begun this year, and as we develop goals, we're gonna focus on those action steps that are already in there or that we haven't started. And then once again, strategic plan, the action steps should be the foundation of each school improvement plan, which will then drive specific work that we have to do for the district. So with that being said, from day one, when we met with the faculty, this is what it's all about, you know. Together, everyone achieves more, and the more people you can bring to the table, especially today with all the challenges that this generation faces, I think they're better. So, I'm a firm believer, it's not just the schools' issue or parents or community, I think it's all of us coming together. And when you have that type of collaboration, the sky's the limit, so. That's, that's my summary of that twenty-four page document that you guys have received.
That was a summary?
That was, that was the summary.
He didn't learn from William Barr.
No. Nope. Nothing was redacted at least.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Sean?
This is the Gallagher report, not the Moe report.
I, Sean, you shared one of the student responses that you got with the teachers the other day.
Yes.
I just, would like the school committee to hear that response.
Sure, so, from working with all the, the students, and, so I worked with the sixth grade students, and I asked those same questions. The strengths, the areas of growth, the hopes, and now, you know, what do you think you're all gonna need to be successful? I input that in the slide, because I used it as a joke with the faculty, but, so, so as I, I collected the information and, you know, we broke, you know, broke the students into groups. But I had all the individual input, and this one sixth grade student said he had three areas that we could teach him. That he'd be successful in, in the real world. The first one is, we need to teach him how to suck up to his bosses. He felt like that was, that was a very important job skill. The second job skill that he thought he, someone's got to teach him, if he has children, how do you take care of kids? And then the third one that was very important for this sixth grade student was someone needs to teach him how to buy food at the grocery market.
Good food.
Yeah, good food, healthy food at the grocery market. So when you have all of these and you're going through, to me, that just, I probably laughed for a good 20 minutes because that was, that was just classic. And that's why, you know, sometimes the students, they give you some real insight, real world insight. So, but no, it was a great process. And I'll tell you, I learned so much, but and then people were so welcoming and sharing. So I can't, I can't complain and I think I really have a really quality understanding of this community. So, which will help as we plan for the future.
So is there a next step to this?
Well, I'm going to take tomorrow off and rest up a little bit now. Yeah, I think the next step is, you know, sharing my findings with our extended leadership team. Start to develop some goals and then come back to school committee this year, you know, probably either May or June, and start to outline, you know, what we're going to be doing next year. Yeah.
A lot of work, Sean. You know, I'm glad that you were able to get so much feedback from the community to help shape you. And I, and I'm also really, really pleased that so much of the feedback that you got mirrors the work that is already in the strategic plan. That there's, there really is a direct connection to that. We had talked about, you know, the two types of strategic plans, the one that sits on the shelf and gathers dust and the one that's a real working, evolving document. And it really feels like we're committed to the latter, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Any other thoughts or feedback for Sean? Man, we should have put that dollar out there.
Could you, could you just talk about what, because I know Dave mentioned the social studies and English language arts components of humanities. But could you also describe how you defined it or how it was defined in the survey?
Yeah, so if you look at those, the questions that were asked, so when you ask over, I don't know, close 400, 500 people, what are the strengths? So they can give you different answers. So what I did is those different answers on strengths and areas of growth. If someone would say strength is I'd like a foreign language program at the high school. So, but some other people would say an area of growth was we'd like to see foreign language at the elementary school because in the past, there was foreign language there and there was a comprehensive foreign language. So you would have both areas that, you know, many people would be commenting on. So what I, what I done is I kind of put that off as a category of humanities because it was not necessarily just foreign language, but there were other students and parents that wanted our music and our arts program enhanced. So in some areas of the high school, arts was a strength. And if you're looking at like the Brezner Hand, where they are getting art, some of the parents and, you know, and faculty would like to enhance art. So then that's, so I have all these different, under humanities, I have all these different categories. Where as, as we're starting to formulate, I have, you know, the needs of each school. I have like the district. So that's kind of how that was broken up, where I took a lot of that input and put it in these different themes. And so some of them, as I said, like if you're looking at special education, there were some parents and stakeholders said, you know, this is a great program, while other parents in the areas of growth said, you know, we could work on this program here. So, or the growth area. So that's, that's kind of, you know, the input that I received. And then also being out and about within the classrooms and talking to teachers and then going to the musicals and, you know, this is one area that I would really like to assist to really have a robust performing arts program, you know, throughout KU. And we have the elements there, we have unbelievable teachers, but it's really starting to formulate, you know, enhancing that program and giving support to those teachers.
So I guess I was thinking, when I think about arts and music and that sort of thing, thinking maybe we might need more of it.
Yes.
Whereas I looked at here under table two, I don't know what page it's on. But the area of growth for our district, this 42% of the staff said reading and literacy is an area of growth.
Correct.
So we obviously don't need more ELA classes because we have one for every kid every year.
Correct.
But that's a different type of humanities focus.
Right, and so, I mean, and that's another area in working with Assistant Superintendent Pick. So you have areas of growth, it's, you know, from the staff, it could be more support, could be, you know what I mean? So generally, areas of growth is literacy, but it has all these different elements within it. So for us to go back and we start focusing as a leadership team, these are the things that we'll pull out and start to focus.
Yeah, as you said, it means different things with different schools.
Correct. So it's, it's not as, so the, and Joan Conley's out there who's my mentor. So I'm hoping she'll give me a good report. But so there's different ways to serve, to me, there was different ways to survey. And the superintendents group was extremely supportive. They gave all these different ideas, they didn't tell you how to do things. But I saw different surveys on, you know, agree, disagree, you know, the bullet points, you get feedback quick. And I, and I felt like that's one way of going about it. And, but then I kind of wanted to allow people to give me their feedback. So individual feedback and so I went about it, you know, which took me a little bit longer, but I asked them all these different aspects. And so we're collecting all these individual responses and then we started to group them, or we started to group them in areas of themes that then I took all of those areas and then embedded in our strategic plan and action steps, we're going to address a lot of these different areas. The areas of strengths, we're going to enhance, the areas of growth, we're going to support. So that's kind of the philosophy. But I'm, I'm excited to bring everything back to our extended leadership team and start to really utilize our strategic plan as we move forward, yeah.
And at some point, I know we've talked a lot the past couple of years about trying to have school committee goals or some sort of missive that something that we were, things that we wanted to make sure we were continuing to work on. So you say you're going to turn these into action steps into like your goals for next year. Do you think that'll happen in time for like a summer retreat where we could then talk about, what's the school committee's part of this going to look like?
And that's, and that's kind of how I see us going back. I know there's a lot of work to develop the strategic plan, but I think it's, I think for the work that we can do is really to utilize the strategic plan, the action steps that we feel that, you know, you're going to probably have two areas. You're going to have action steps that we feel like we can accomplish within the year and then some action steps that might be a little bit big picture down the road. So I think for us, that's probably how it would go about. You know, here are the action steps and goals that we feel we can accomplish and here's some action steps and goals, we need a little bit more planning. But I see, we go back to role clarity and support. I see the school committee and myself working together as a team and really supporting the work of the district improvement plan in these action steps as we move into next year. I think this year when we all got together was really just to develop, like the little teamwork and to get to know each other. But now I'm pretty comfortable, I think we've done a good job as a committee, that we can go back to the strategic plan and then that will also help us down the road as we develop our budget and, you know, priorities for the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Nice work.
Thank you.
We have, next item is the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Okay. I'm going to just briefly tell you about our professional day that we had, was it just yesterday? So we had a full day, professional day for our staff. And we started in the morning with a little light breakfast gathering and then the superintendent greeted the staff and gave a little pep rally to get everybody excited about the day and set the tone. Principal Furlong had arranged to have a celebration for Earth Day and the whole auditorium was filled with beautiful plants. And there was an individual plant for every teacher to take in celebration of Earth Day because yesterday was Earth Day. So it was a really nice way to start. Everybody started in a, in a good mood and with the right attitude. And then they went off to their buildings and the professional development day was building driven this year. And in the spirit of the same questions that we've been asking our students, we've come forward and told you before that during our learning walks this year, we've been asking the students, what are you getting good at? So that was the perspective I took yesterday as I talked to teachers and their professional development, asking the teachers what they were getting good at yesterday. So at the Brezner Hand, we had teachers involved in a variety of workshops, but some of the highlights were they were getting good at building inclusive learning communities through teaming. And that's teaming with interventionist, special education teachers, classroom teachers. Through that process, they were working on placement and scheduling for next year. In their collaboration, some of our staff attended the workshop on Stop the Bleed, which is really about offering professional development around how to handle a trauma situation where there's been physical harm that would literally need to stop the bleed. Some of our staff worked on building resiliency around difficult situations with, with a consultant. And then there was also a piece of the day that stressed learning self-care techniques so that you can be in better shape to give your all to the students. The Mullen teachers really had a single focus, they were working with keys to literacy and they were focusing on comprehension. And some of the things that, that they, that was a particular focus was practicing using top-down webs for various purposes, you know, to make predictions and connections around topics when they're reading. Teachers worked on explicit ways of identifying main ideas and beginning to categorize that. And they were also getting good at learning how to help their students interact with text using techniques like two column notes and whatnot. And our teachers at the middle school were getting good at revising their scope and sequence of their curriculum maps. And within that, they were writing a course overview, they were writing big idea statements for each unit, they were revising their essential questions and identifying key vocabulary. And our high school teachers were getting good at using protocols to run common planning sessions that involve looking at student work, calibrating scoring and validating assessments against the standards. They were organized data around team focus, student learning goals and monitoring how the student growth was coming along. So it was a busy day, teachers were highly engaged, but I think you'll see that a lot of the work that was happening yesterday connects directly to some of the strategies that Superintendent Gallagher presented in his entry plan. So it was a good day.
Great, any questions? On subcommittee reports, commanding subcommittee reports for the subcommittees. I'm afraid I'll have to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Ballers in favor?
Aye.
I would have gotten that dollar.
You would have. You would have.
It was Sean's turn to put it down.